Okay, you should be good to go.
Okay, welcome. We'll call this Arches Hot Spot Region Coordinating Committee. Meeting to an open at 5:03 PM, 10/7/2020. Item number two, do we have any citizens to be heard?
No, none were submitted this time around.
Okay, on to item number three, discussion to reach consensus on dispersed parking projects, including off Main Street Parking Concept and Emma Boulevard Parking Project. Just to open this discussion up, kind of bring everyone up to speed, you know, and having some discussions with UDOT, you know, and some of the committee members since the last meeting, and staff and Carly, you know, I think we've got really what we need at the committee level. You know, we still have, there's plenty to work out and work through as a community after we receive the funding, you know, on the design and the aesthetics kind of implementation phase of that stuff, but really what we're looking at is our parking project downtown on the off main streets, and that also includes Emma Boulevard. And, you know, we've kind of recently gotten hung up in, like I said, some of those specifics as far as design and things, but I think as a committee, I would really like us to be able to kind of close this discussion because I think, you know, and discussing this with UDOT, we have what we need. And as far as the concern, you know, from the committee, as far as landscaping and design, you know, those are things that we can continue to work out moving forward. And I, you know, both UDOT and myself, you know, concurred that everyone is comfortable moving forward with the landscaping not being precluded from the application documentation, and UDOT has been consistent that 6% is their threshold for design. And so, you know, essentially what we would, we don't need a motion today, but we would just agree as a committee, you know, straw poll to move forward with what we have in that somewhere between the 7th and the 9th Street project, which is, you know, anywhere from 109 to a maximum of 188 stalls, excuse me, 153 to 188 stalls. And that cost per stall and, you know, the amount of streets and what type of concrete, those are things that can kind of be fine tuned. But I think we accomplished, you know, our goal in that we've got a parking project that's feasible. We have the concept, give or take some streets, and everything looks good. And so really what I'm looking for here as your chair is, you know, a straw puller head nod that everyone is comfortable in giving the project, you know, their blessing at this point, and that it would move on for final approval from the the City Council and the County Commission at the joint meeting on the 20th. And so, you know, now is the opportunity for any last words, comments, concerns, sentiments on the parking project.
Um, a question. So are you, just to be clear, are you proposing that we just forward like to the council and commission, here are the three things that we think should be funded? And if there's any more discrimination about at what level they'd be funded, that be left to the legislative bodies or even further down the line?
So just specifically on the downtown hotspot parking, Emma Boulevard and just the parking projects. What we're trying to do here is leave it at this point within that range, both in number of stalls and cost per stall.
Okay, Curtis, and another related question, I guess. We had talked at the last committee meeting about other uses of hotspot funding, in particular pilot transit program and the shared use path. So, and what you're discussing right now, are you setting those on the back burner, so to speak? Are they are to be presented as well to the?
Yeah, yeah, sorry for the confusion, Mike. So they are to be presented as well, and really, so here's generally, I think, where we're at. We've got the parking project dialed in to the degree that is sufficient for the committee, and we're good there. Spending any more time on the parking project, getting into, you know, types of concrete and getting into more depth right now takes away of the time that we have left to finalize the transit and the multi-use pathway project. And so just at this specific agenda item before we moved on to transit, looking for agreement from the committee to agree that we've got the parking project within the range of 7 and 9 streets. We know we have a cost per stall range. And so we're looking to just close the discussion on just the parking project between now and the joint meeting on the 20th, and just move forward with where we have the parking project now. And then as a committee, we'll spend the rest of today's meeting and next week's meeting finalizing whatever else we need to finalize for the other two projects, meaning public transit and the Spanish Valley Multi-Use Pathway. But at some point, we've got a closed discussion on these projects so that we have the bandwidth as a committee to finalize these others. And in my discussions with Carly, some of the committee members in UDOT, it feels like we just kind of got to a point with the parking where we're starting to get too far down into the weeds into the design and aesthetics, you know, component of this project that can be sorted out and agreed upon and implemented after the money's awarded and the project is in the hands of the city, if that makes sense. Does that make sense to everybody? So we're just looking to close the discussion on the parking project. And then at next week's meeting, we'll give the parking project a final approval with the other projects, and then they'll be on to the joint meeting on the 20th. So on the agenda for today, after we close the discussion on the parking project, you can see we're moving on to the Moab Shuttle Transit Outline. We're hoping to do the same thing there. We're going to provide an update on what the local matches is being identified by UDOT and have any last thoughts, comments, questions that needs to be, you know, hammered out before we finish up. And then we're looking to close the discussion as a committee on that also, and then on to the multi-use path. So we're getting to the finish here. At the last meeting, there were several recommendations. Committee members wanted the 9th Street and stamped concrete, and a committee member wanted an 8th Street, you know, with this kind of concrete. And the discussions in the last few days is that we don't need to get into that depth right now as a committee. That's not our best use of time. We do have a project that's feasible. We're in agreement with UDOT that what we have now is sufficient to move forward, and there are many variables. You know, that can change and flex between now and the design phase. And so keep the discussion on the parking project, and again, I'll open it up for questions, comments, and concerns. If anyone is not comfortable moving, you know, closing the discussion on the parking projects, then now's the time to inform the committee and myself why and what else that they're concerned about or that they'd like to see addressed before we close the discussion on it. Karen, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm just, just to clarify, so we are, I mean, if we're all in agreement that the side street parking is what we want to go ahead with, that's what we're saying. And then we'll get into detail later, like if it's 9th Streets or 7th Streets, or I mean, will that be determined by potentially like what kind of funding there is for other projects as well? I mean, how do you see that playing out?
So, UDOT, this is a good reminder, like from the beginning, they've established that they want us to work through this process and not budgeting. They don't want us to take 10 million and budget all the projects in. They want us to present each project on the merits. And so we don't want to do that. And, but we don't want to waste time fighting between the types of concrete and debating that out when our time best spent is finishing up our package and prioritizing them and delivering them to the council and the commission. And so what we're saying is, is we don't need to decide between 7 or 8 or 9 Streets right now. We can present, we can present what we have within the range and the scope that we have, that there are variables between 7 and 9 Streets, cost per stall, things like that. We can present the project within that range. Obviously, the more we get, the better. And then once the money is awarded to us and we move forward into the design phase, then those things will sort themselves out.
So Curtis, that's all, that's great. I just want to add that another important factor here is a public perception of what we want to do. We're about to have a meeting, our first virtual public meeting tonight, as I understand it, and followed by another one. And I am quite confident that we'll get some interesting feedback that will bear on all the issues that you just discussed about by the time it gets to UDOT.
Yeah, and we have, so, yes, and the deliverable from us as a committee was a concept and a design and a concept budget. And we have those things. Feedback from the public is very much to be well-received and implemented to, you know, the best degree. Again, the issue with the landscaping and the design, I think as a committee and as UDOT, we're agreeing that we are not going to preclude landscaping, you know, and quality aesthetics and what we're proposing. And UDOT is in agreement that we don't need to, you know, flush that out upfront. They have communicated that 6% is their limit on aesthetics. And so I think if, you know, one of the concerns that I heard from the City Council was that the constituents and City Council members wanted to see the landscaping included, and that is included, going to be included in the application language. And so, you know, once we're awarded the funding and we can evaluate kind of, you know, what limitations, if any, that places on our concept design, you know, then we can take it from there. And so, again, the meeting next week, we're not voting on prioritizing projects tonight. All we're doing is looking to wrap up the discussion so that we can continue to, you know, march through the remaining projects and close out the discussion on those. The meeting next week, we're going to vote on basically, you know, entertain a motion to approve the project package. It includes, you know, the projects themselves, and then also a priority list of how we prioritize the projects as a committee. That is our deliverable to the council and the commission at the joint meeting on the 20th. And then they will hopefully give it their blessing, and then it moves on to UDOT. Carly, you have a question or comment? Sorry. Oh, Karen.
Yeah, so no action items today, is that correct?
That's correct. It's just, it's just, we need to start having closure on these projects as we've kind of, you know, gotten as much meat off the bone as we can. And I think we're there on parking. You know, most of, I think what we're trying to get into, you know, is going to play itself out after the money's awarded and we can reevaluate and then, you know, and then focus on the design. And I think the follow-up, you know, one thing I want to mention is some of us, you know, and I take accountability for this, you know, I participated in a similar exercise as this in the first go-round with hotspot. I did not, you know, remain as involved as I could have. And that distance between, you know, the folks like us on this committee that have, you know, equity and a stake in delivering good projects for the citizens, I think, you know, the lesson there for me is next year, you know, committee members, I just encourage you to stay involved in those processes and helping staff so that we can kind of maintain good alignment all the way through finish. And I think some of these issues that we're not hung up on, but like, you know, discussing as far as like the concrete and the design and those things with parking, like that's kind of where that's going to come in. It doesn't need to be, you know, legislated upfront by us, if that makes sense. So, any other questions, concerns, thoughts that you'd like to see, you know, considered for the parking projects or any clarification needed? And again, the materials were included in the packet. There's links on the agenda.
Curtis?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know, I've had a few, I've had a few people get back to me from the downtown Main Street Alliance, and they're definitely in support of what's going on. So there hasn't been a huge response to it yet, but what I've got so far has been positive, so. Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out to the committee. And I'm hoping to get more responses over the next week. So far, it's looking good.
Thanks, Wes. So just to, you know, summary again, as we're looking at between 7 and 9 Streets, including Emma Boulevard, that's a total project cost of between 4.8 million and 7.2 million, and 153 stalls to 188 stalls. Per stall, that's a range of between 31,600 per stall and 38,580 per stall. So that's basically, you know, the bracket that we're agreeing to as a committee and sending forward, and to give some flexibility for, you know, changes, changes in costs, things like that, conditions. So, and we don't know what the Transportation Commission is going to do. We really don't. And I, you know, not that the staff does either. So everyone's comfortable kind of leaving it in that kind of flexible range, you know, then we'll just close the discussion on it and just move on to the other two projects. And I want to commend everyone and, you know, and really congratulate them and send a thank you to, you know, Chuck's office and, you know, everyone that helped out. You know, we just kind of started off walking around downtown, not sure where this is going to end up. And as far as a per stall count, you know, I think UDOT has conceded that, you know, conceptually, we've generated more stalls than they anticipated. And I think the budget looks good, too. So kudos to everyone for having the vision and the determination to just make it, you know, an idea, you know, really quality concept and design. So with no further comments on that, we'll move on to item four, discussion and potential action regarding shuttle transit concept, including discussion about local government match opportunities. There's an outline included in the packet here. You know, one of the updates that I have for you all is there's kind of been a question for, you know, us as far as, you know, what is the local match? What does that look like? And so what UDOT had communicated to me recently is what they're identifying as the local buy-in is they're envisioning a five-year pilot. They're willing to cover years one through three, operating costs of that pilot at $500,000 per year, and that they would ask that the local community, local governments, our local buy-in would be to cover the operating and maintenance of years four and five, which is 500,000 per year. So essentially, what they're asking for is for us to come up with a million dollars in operating cost to cover years four and five of that pilot. And that seems to be the big decision by the committee, you know, and the council and the commission is, you know, is that doable? Can we do that? You know, and if so, then it looks like we've got a project there. And, you know, and I also just want to make sure Karen, you know, turn it over to you and give you the opportunity to touch on this project, as you've spent a lot of time too. So by all means.
Yeah, I mean, just in, you know, the last week, just trying to really figure out what that, what our skin is, and I want to be very respectful to UDOT and let them know that, you know, we're very well aware that we too have to participate. It's not, this is not something that we're expecting them just to take it and to pay for it, and we just get to, you know, sit back and not do the work that's going to be necessary. There's a lot still to be done. You know, talking with Jeff Sanders, he was really feeling like there is funding through UDOT even for years four and five and longer term, but we're going to have to start really getting on that within the next year and to get our grant funding applications in because most of UDOT funding is already allocated for the next three years. So this is actually really good timing. And I see that, you know, we have the potential through TRT monies, or, you know, potentially, you know, parking fees if we had meters downtown or a, you know, partnership with hotels. Or, I mean, there's a lot for us to work through, but there's definitely the potential to find this, the money that we're going to be responsible for as a city and a county. As I see, this is going to be, you know, one of the more joint-related projects on, you know, on the selection. So looking forward to that cooperation and collaboration.
Yeah, so I want everyone to make sure that they've had an opportunity to review the memorandum that is attached to the packet under this agenda item. So you're looking at a memo from Fair and Peers Consultants we've worked with before. This essentially is an outline, you know, of the contract between UDOT and Fair and Peers and what they would deliver to us in regards to public transit. And so UDOT has received this from Fair and Peers. They've essentially told them to hold off until they get that commitment from local government that we would be willing to fund years four and five, you know, of a transit pilot. And so that's kind of, that's the big question there. And if we're willing to do that, the only discussion that's really left to have as a committee and as a group is any concerns or questions that we have regarding the scope of work from Fair and Peers, any suggestions or thoughts that we have there. So Carly, go ahead.
Yeah, and I know UDOT also asked us to look into some other possible match, even in the first couple of years of this. And some ideas were thrown around about staff time, I guess, just quantifying staff time, partnerships with hotels, acquiring or providing land and space for a bus barn. And I wanted, I committed to Monty and to Jeff that I would kind of come up with some rough numbers, and I have, and I'm happy to share it with them. But, you know, they're really rough because so much is unknown. But for the first year at least, I think we can quantify it at about $151,000 of value in terms of staff time, land for the bus barn, the bus barn itself, which might cost anywhere about to about $60,000, as well as trying to quantify land for transit stops in negotiations with hotels. And then for years two and three, we're looking at, you know, $133,000 for, I think, local resources. I'm happy to share that with Monty, but I wanted to make sure that they knew there would be initial skin in the game as well, not just in years four and five.
Thanks, Carly. Any questions or discussion on public transit from the committee?
Curtis, if I can, I just would like to say too that, you know, UDOT has appeared to be very receptive of the fact that they know our situation as a county and a city concerning our rec tourist industry and the fact that we really have no real cash money at this time and trying to figure out ways in which, like Carly, you know, brought up, just like, you know, offering staff or land to make this program happen. So, I mean, that's been very, it's been very gracious in a way to be able to come up with, you know, other solutions than money, which is, we both know, we don't have, so just want to bring that up.
Has there been any kind of discussion between the commitments between the different local bodies, the city and the county? I haven't been privy to any of those, so.
No, not formally. This was all kind of new. And this kind of raises a question, I guess. Maybe this has been clarified, but Monty, in our discussion, you had mentioned the local match needing to be that for us to cover four and five of the O and M costs, which was identified at 500,000 a year. The additional resources like Carly's mentioned, that's in addition to that, or? Can we get some clarification on that?
You bet, Curtis. I think initially, we were just, we were asking what the community could bring to it on the local match as far as, you know, bringing some skin in the game so that we had some confidence that the pilot could ultimately end up in success. And so those ideas were put on the table before when we were still trying to determine what the match could be because I wanted to have an understanding of the type of match that was available as we had our discussions within UDOT. And as Karen mentioned, in light of all the understanding of the economic challenges to the community based on COVID and what's happened with that, and the good reduction in tourism and sales tax, we decided that it would be appropriate to go to operate the first three years on the hotspot funding. And then that would hopefully allow sufficient time for the economy to rebound and for the community within the council and the commission to make plans for funding those years four and five. I believe we all have the expectation that the economy is willing to respond well when we get to whatever the new normal is relative to COVID, and that we would be able to look forward to having, you know, tech news back to what we consider normal. So as far as what Carly was working on, I would say that was separate before we had some real good definition of what that five-year plan would be. I absolutely believe that having, you know, the staff members to operate the RFP and to oversee the system is decrucial, and that would be required. Any other, in addition to that, having those resources would allow to augment the funding that UDOT provides to make sure that the program is that much more viable. And also, I'm sure it would help with the showing the investment that the community has to make sure that the pilot is successful as we evaluate these projects to the commission. Does that help?
Yeah, it does.
Was going to be additional, but the reason it was there and the reason we were working on that initially is because we were trying to work on that clarification.
Sure. Carly and then Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, in speaking with Jeff Sanders yesterday, too, and this is sort of to your question, Evan, I think pretty early on, if this transit concept had been selected, we would need to both the county and the city sort of ramp up efforts to either like have an ILA or some sort of agreement, sort of cost-sharing roles and responsibilities agreement to get that into place for the RFP and for grant opportunities, too. So if we were to take on operations by year four, we as in this local community, we would probably need to be, make our intentions for that known pretty early on for the planning of agencies like UDOT, which are going to be providing the grants. So there would have to be, I imagine, some sort of formal agreement and some sort of negotiation about how we as a, I guess, region would be funding the years four and five costs. And that should happen pretty quickly.
Go ahead, Karen.
Well, I was just, it's curious, Monty, in saying at 500,000 a year for four and five, and then looking at the potential budgets for, that we've seen through Jeff and Fair and Pair, F and P, that it is 500,000 a year, you know, for the whole thing. So is that, how does that match up?
So that is an estimate. So, so that is an estimate, right? If the five hundred thousand isn't, we, we haven't solicited an RFP. And so we don't know what that specific cost would be. That is an estimate provided by Fair and Peers based on systems that they're aware of that have operated in other locations. What we would be doing today, or not today, but in the, in the near future is if we get an agreement from the community to accept that, um, that situation of the year four and five match and operating expense, then we would move forward with completing the concept report. Um, as outlined by this document that's in front of the group here, um, that provided by Fair and Peers. And we would move forward with that and gain a better understanding of those costs. Again, the five hundred thousand is estimated, we'll get a little bit better understanding. And quite frankly, you get a final understanding once you solicit the RFP and get responses. And so that's, that would be the path forward. Um, one of the other things I want to talk about as far as timeframe, something that I've, I've asked questions of Fair and Peers about is, you know, we are in the midst of a, of the COVID pandemic. And today, I, I don't know that, uh, anybody's going to go jump on a shuttle, right? Given social distancing and things of that nature. However, in my conversations with Fair and Peers and what they're seeing at a national level as far as the future transit, um, they are very bullish and, and the industry is bullish on the, the ability for us to get past this, this current concerns with transit and, and mass transit specifically and shuttle systems and that it may, I don't think we need to, to accelerate the development of a shuttle plan. Um, perhaps, you know, I don't believe it's going to start next spring. Perhaps if we all, if we get over this situation and we have confidence that it'll be able to operate efficiently, we could. But I, I believe it's going to be a little more protracted in the development of that and the understanding so that it is the appropriate time to move forward. And so I, I just wanted to throw that in there. And so, you know, the, the numbers we're working with today are concept level numbers, just like they are with the parking. Um, we, we have an understanding that the funding could be utilized for that for years one through three. And the community so decides and the committee, I should say, so decides. And then the council and commission, um, in return, give an approval for that. That's the direction we would head.
So do any of the committee members not feel comfortable, you know, endorsing us move, move forward? You know, it's local governments in support of this project, meaning is anyone not comfortable with committing to covering years four and five? Which is five hundred thousand dollars a year and, you know, and, and maintenance costs. One of the things I'll add is that, you know, and this is a conversation we'll have to have on the county side Evan, but public transportation was added to an eligible expense for TRT. Um, last year. So that, that's a, you know, something that we can kind of, um, the next couple of years, you know, work on TRT. Um, you know, to see that we, we could have a contribution come from that. Um, but that's really all that's left to decide. And that and, you know, and we're comfortable with the, with the, uh, the scope of work there, you know, from Fair and Peers. You know, Mi- Mike, you've got some, Mike Duncan, you've got some time and energy spent on seeing transit move forward. Have you had an opportunity to review that scope of work? Are you comfortable with that document?
Uh, I did take a look at it Curtis, but I don't, I didn't think about it in great detail. So I'm comfortable with it for the time being. You bet.
Thoughts, questions, comments? Go ahead Caitlin, sorry.
I'll just say that I'm comfortable moving forward. It seems like, um, there will need to be more discussion at the, our legislative bodies. Um, about our budgets, but it seems like over the course of the years, we'll be able to fund it. I don't know if this is implicit in the scope or not, but, um, it, it seems like it might come out. But I think I would, I would be curious what the ridership, uh, forecast is and how that translates into a, um, value for us as opposed to other things. But I feel like that's something that, um, will get worked out and, um, and learn more as the pilot project progresses.
Yeah. Good question. You know, another question, you may have addressed this Monty, but, um, on October twentieth, at the joint meeting is when the committee's work will, will kind of close when the, this, the city council and the county commission, you know, either approve or, uh, approve and amended ver- you know, form of our concept package or priority list. At, at what point would then would Fair and Peers begin their work or would they only begin their work after the, the project had been given the, the approval of the transportation commission? Oh, sorry, Monty, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. If it's approved, um, by the legislative bodies, then I believe we would move forward um, with Fair and Peers to do the concept. Um, I believe there's, if there's confidence by the communities to fund years four and five, then UDOT would take that in good faith that that could be done and we would utilize, and it would come from, uh, you know, hotspot funding to pay for the concept to move this forward. And part of that, as you see, would be to, you know, on, on section seven, or excuse me, section five, item seven. And there outlined is a sample RFP. In order to be able to advertise. And so there would be obviously like the design and the others, they'd be working through that with the community. Um, but I think that's when we would begin that work Curtis.
Okay. Thank you. All right. If, if there are no more comments on public transit, we'll close the discussion on that and move on. Everybody comfortable with that? Okay. We'll move on then to item five, which is discussion and potential action regarding the Spanish Valley Trail concept. And there's a, a link there to the, uh, concept cost estimate form. You know, we're, we're, we're really looking to, to do the same as the last two projects on this and that the Spanish Valley multi-use pathway as a concept, design and budget has, was really completed, you know, previously to this committee being formed. And so we've just kind of acknowledged that at the front end of this committee's work and then just kind of put it on the shelf. And, um, you know, so at this point, you know, any, any thoughts, questions, comments, concerns, you know, about that, that design or that budget? Um, we'd like to get those on the table now. Uh, and, you know, once we're finished with this exercise, we've, we've basically closed the discussion on, on the projects themselves. And like I said, at the next meeting, we would kind of vote formally as a committee to approve those as a package and as, and rank them, you know, uh, in a prioritized list, uh, and, and on to the council and the commission. Go ahead Mila.
Um, thanks. I just wanted to introduce Chad Sonbeger, who I think some of you are already familiar with. Um, he's been the main engineer on this project and, um, I know that there were some questions about, uh, ways of making this project, uh, chopped up into some smaller pieces. Um, so Chad is here and he can help, uh, walk us through any of those options if we want to. Um, and also answer some questions regarding, um, some of the right of way issues and things like that. So, um, he's available and, uh, we do have some more information as well. If you'd like to see, uh, some of those maps.
Thank, thanks Mila. Just real quick Chad, you know, I know something that's come up. We, we've had some, uh, suggestions that the, the multi-use pathway, you know, the farther north it goes, the warmer it gets in the program criteria. That doesn't mean that we have to agree to chop it up as a committee, but those are, that is some feedback we've gotten from UDOT. And so, um, you know, I guess just keep that in mind and turn it over to you Chad and the committee for any questions on, on the project.
All right. Hey, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay? Can you hear me? Yeah. Right. I was just making sure I'm on a new laptop now, but, um, do you mind if I share my screen with you? And I'll give you just a brief overview of what's been done in the past and kind of some options that you guys might have in the future.
Go ahead Chad.
Make sure, okay. On, on Google Earth here, this shows where it, um, divides off of, is that Mill Creek Drive there? I think it is. I don't have my labels on. This is where the Spanish Valley Drive path starts. And just as Curtis said, me and Mila discussed earlier today, that it really does make a lot of sense to just start on the north end of that project because we could continue to tie on to it later. But the north end of the project presents a lot of challenges that would be good to get over with, um, primarily, you know, in the beginning. And there's a lot of safety issues right there at the beginning too. You're coming up these, these hillsides here and there's not a lot of room for pedestrians and bicyclists. And so if, if that was chosen to put, throw some money at, it would be a really great place to start just at the beginning on the north end. And we could go as far south as we wanted to on that. And it goes all the way back down to the county line on Spanish Valley Drive. Um, just a quick, uh, little, let's see, going to show you what the profile that looks like. So the existing lanes of the road, there's 10 foot lanes on the road. And then what this would be is, uh, just an extension of that asphalt. And 10 foot wide section that could be used for pedestrians. And then let me go over to the cost estimates. So the total cost of this path, we're looking at 2021 projected cost for 5.2 miles was around 4.3 million. And that includes all of the engineering, um, right of way estimates that we've got here in the past with the trails committee. Um, it includes everything, but I just quickly before this meeting created a, uh, basic spreadsheet just to show you guys what you might be looking at. If you wanted to break this down into something smaller and say you wanted to do that first mile on that north end, um, plug that in there and just do it a cost per foot plus the cost of those structures to get it up that hillside. And there's a bridge structure, um, a little further down. If we wanted to include just that in this first work, then you're looking at about 1.5 million. And I'd be happy to get with you guys at any point that you wanted to sell some different options and, and look at things. But that's just a quick example showing what this first little mile and a half would look like coming up that hill. And as well as a pedestrian bridge over the pack creek down here. Yeah. Anybody have any questions?
So Chad, as the, oh, yeah, as a per mileage estimate, um, would you say that first mile is unusually high?
Um, yes, it is because we're looking at doing a whole bunch of concrete retaining structures. I'll show you right here. Um, you guys all have access to this. But in that first mile, we have these retaining wall structures. We have about 3,700 feet of it. And you're looking at, you know, over half a million dollars just for those retaining structures.
That's a hill, kind of the narrowest part of the Spanish, uh, drive.
Yes. I'll swivel this around a little bit to see, see that, but it's very narrow coming up there. So what we're looking at doing is putting a raised portion of path along this hillside so that we're not cutting too far into everybody's property. But, and keeping it closer to the road, but keeping pedestrians safe and away from the traffic. So that's what that retaining wall structure would be for right through there.
Sorry, is that? Well, yeah, you look like you're in a dreamscape Evan. Um, I, are you, is that Chad, is that the only, um, way that, uh, you can get through that section? I mean, cause I.
Yeah. Back when we worked through this with the trails committee, uh, we determined that this was probably our best route. You're so restrict, restricted through this area. You can't come off on these properties because it drops off so far down into this hole. But to, in order to cut this land out right through here and just tape your site, your slopes up, you'd be cutting clear back into these people's property and these homes, these existing structures, you'd be, you know, cutting clear back to there to get stable slopes. So that's what we finally came to the conclusion that the, the cheapest alternative, the best alternative also was to do the retaining structures.
And, and with that $647,000, is that also the cost of the land that you have to acquire from the individual property owners?
No, but that cost was in, in this estimate that I put here, um, my cost per foot of trail was that, that did include the right of way cost.
And they have been approached?
Uh, they were in talks, um, when, well, it was right before COVID hit and Zachariah Levine left the county. Uh, they had started meeting with some of the landowners to discuss, uh, right of way acquisition. And that's kind of where things left off. I don't know that anything went any further from this point. So I'm not even sure which landowners have been contacted at this point, if any. Here's that right of way acquisition line.
Does the, how does the committee feel about presenting the whole concept or, you know, a, a portion of the concept? What are the thoughts there? Yay, nay?
I feel like we should present the whole thing as we are with the, um, it seems like it would be consistent with the downtown parking that we just give the whole, the, the whole concept to the legislative bodies or if that's what we're going to do and then let them. If I'm understanding the process with UDOT correctly, and then so at some point, some determination will be made about the prioritization. But, and that's what I attempted to do with my spreadsheet from the last meeting, but it seems like maybe that was getting ahead of ourselves. But depending, depending on how many downtown streets get funded and at what finish level, there could be enough money for the whole Spanish Valley Trail. And I'm just, but it seems like we're not clear on what our priorities are or have, we weren't a week ago.
Yeah. I mean, the, the, the two concerns there is UDOT doesn't want us budgeting and trying to fit all the projects in a, a box on a fixed number. So we're trying to look at this on a project by project basis. Next week, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll agree on the, on the projects, just like kind of the application language and the concepts themselves. Just, just an approval and then prioritize them one through three essentially. Um, and then move that on to the legislative body. And there wasn't an intention to have the legislative body jump back down into the weeds and start talking about cement and the number of streets either that, that the parking would just move on within that range and that flexibility. But it's the committee's decision. This project hasn't gotten, we're just really now kind of diving into, you know, if we want to propose this project, you know, in an amended fashion or whole. And council member Jones has recommended that we, that we forward this project in its entirety as a concept. Any other thoughts on that?
Chad, you crunch any numbers like a, a per, per foot cost if we went all the way to the arena?
I couldn't quite understand you totally, but, uh, you're wondering how much.
Or did you, did you calculate any other purchase besides just the first mile and the full project?
Uh, no, there, there's, there's not any other breakdowns, but that, that's what I guess I'm telling you guys. If you guys want to look at a multitude of other options, I'd be happy to look at it with you and give you all the knowledge I know about it. And tell you like where your expensive areas are going to be, where you've, you know, just. And tell you like where your expensive areas are going to be, where you, you know, just anything you want to know, I'd be happy to walk you through and help you estimate what a portion of that would be.
Okay.
But roughly, you know, aside from the structures, everything else is pretty straightforward. Um, you've got pavement and drainage. And so that that cost per foot, that $129 a foot, that's a pretty safe number just to look at basic, let's go point A to point B. We don't have any structures, but if you are going to include the the other structures, you know, then that's why we have that separated in that estimate. If you guys want to look through that at all and kind of see where we've put that money, so. But the structures are definitely expensive, so.
Were there any other structures identified outside that first mile? You said the first mile was the bridge and wall?
So in the first mile, it's only the retaining walls. Um, I'll go back into here. The bridge is over Pack Creek. If you come down a little bit further, here's Pack Creek. Let's see, that's not Pack Creek. All right there. So in this area right now, there's an existing Fox Culver Bridge. And we did, we've talked with you, Dot, we've looked at past estimates, we determined it would be cheaper just to obtain a little bit of right of way and put a uh freestanding pedestrian bridge, a pre cap or pre-built structure that we could set on a buttments to come across here. So the path would just come out here a little bit and then go across that little pedestrian bridge, kind of like, we've got one in Moab Downtown. Um, oh, what's that road over there by Zach's Pizza? It goes to the west.
Oh, 100.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's another similar type bridge right over there, but it'd be something like that. And that that bridge, I'm going to say, let me go back to that estimate. Um, structures. Yeah, that prefab bridge, you're looking at 114,000 to put that structure in, but the rest of that is in that first mile, those retaining walls.
Hey, Curtis, not to, um, uh, it's 5:56.
Yeah, we have a hard cutoff in three minutes uh for our, for our town hall. So we need to um, and if we need to, we can, we can um have Chad back, you know, next week. Um, if there's, if we need to kind of spend some more time on this um before we kind of make our final decisions. But um.
I like the project. I think it makes sense to kind of go for the big ask and then roll it back from there. But um, I'm uh curious to hear from other council members as well.
Thanks, Evan.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Seems like, like sort of a small cutback would just be to stop it where that bridge would be. And avoid that expense, but it seems like that could get worked out later. So I support that proposal.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on whether we want to include the project in its entirety, you know, or or scale it back prior to uh being included in the in the deck?
So Curtis, may I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Monty.
One of the things that that concerns me would be the right of way and our level of confidence in that right of way and whether there's willing sellers or not. And that's going to be one of the questions that gets asked early on. And so if there's a way to address that in the near term, that would be good. I I realize you don't always have the ability to reach out to those landowners prior to having a funded project, but I think in this case, it's, it would be important information to understand.
Yeah, and and Chad, to that point, could you just speak to uh the design standards that this was built to? Uh, I think that if I remember correctly, it was kind of built for like a uh the dream scenario, but if then we ran into option or setbacks with the uh right aways, that there was the option to just kind of uh bump it over to like a a painted shoulder of the existing pavement instead of uh an actual separated path?
Yeah, there definitely is a few options, but a lot of type, a lot of this is based off of previous paths we've done uh with you, Dot. And there is a level of safety that they kind of expect. But if there is circumstances and financial circumstances don't always permit this, but if there are certain circumstances or restraints that won't allow us to have a full width path, then we can usually um get away with with a lesser factor of safety. But if it comes down to right of way acquisition or um a little bit of funding, usually they expect um whoever's building to go to whatever lengths they can to provide um a minimum level of safety. And that's kind of what we tried to base that typical section off of that I showed you previously um was the minimum that we would need, the minimum spacing away from traffic. And that was five feet away from that white line before that path started. So we tried to make this as small as we could and still meet the minimum safety requirement that they wanted to see.
And if I may make another I'm sorry, the another
I was just gonna, how many properties had been identified as a um?
Yeah, we we'd have a whole nother set of drawings.
Needing that right of way acquisition.
There's quite a few and uh
Sorry, we can get into that later with the time.
Yep.
I don't, I know.
Yeah, I think what, I think what we should do is is plan to add a discussion on this um at next week's agenda and kind of finish up. If if you could join us again, Chad, that'd be fantastic. And then and then we'll make our final uh decisions following that. But we are all, the committee, or some of us are all doing a public town hall right now. So I'm going to have to close this off. Monty, do you, do you have anything that that's urgent or important or can?
It can wait. I just, we need to understand the long-term plan for that roadway as well, because that would play into whether or not it's reasonable to put the path onto that roadway.
Okay, let's, let's finish up this discussion on this project next week. And for the committee members that have questions, concerns or comments, feel free to shoot them to me or Carly so we can kind of get prepared for that in the discussion. And then um thank you all. I know we're moving uh fast here at the end. Uh, you know, the committee's work, so feel free to reach out to me anytime for any clarification and we'll see you in the town hall. Do we stay up? We don't stay on this Zoom, right? Carly, we jump on a fresh one?
Yep, a brand new one. Someone will get it started.
All right, so we'll, we'll call this meeting to a close at 6:02 PM. Thank you.